councillor Barry and councillor Finley, you've still got your microphones on.
Sorry.
Yes, Stephen. Town clerk.
Yes.
I've got Mark on the phone, and what's it saying, Mark? The host has another meeting in progress, it says, when he's trying to get in.
I wonder if he's using the old or the previous council meeting invite.
Yeah. Is he using the planning meeting one?
Are you using the planning meeting link?
Instead of the.
Microphone.
We're now live on.
One second, just let me.
You're still not muted, councillor Barry, you're still unmuted. Are we live, town clerk, ready to go?
We are live, I will let councillor Anderson in as soon as he appears.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I've given the password and ID, and he's just getting into it now, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Could I ask the town clerk to, if he could mute councillor Barry, if he could just help him out, I think he's struggling.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, thank you. Okay. Good evening, welcome to this evening's meeting on Wednesday the 1st of July 2020 via Zoom video conferencing. Notice by giving the above meeting and the business to be dealt with at the meeting and listening agenda set out below. Okay. Agenda item number one, minutes of the last meeting to receive, consider and adopt or otherwise the minutes of the meeting of the council on Wednesday the 24th of June 2020.
Yeah, I'll move it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, do I have a second there? Councillor Ty. Councillor Ty, second that. Do I have a second there?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All in favour, please show hands. Just looking for councillor Saxton's vote, please, and councillor Cunningham, would you like to vote? Thank you. It's everybody's vote. Councillor Barry? Okay, that's everybody, that's carried, thank you. Agenda item number two, to note apologies received by the town clerk prior to the meeting, do we have any?
Mayor, we have apologies from councillor Blackburn, councillor De Bruks, Dave Brooks and councillor Ensign.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, to receive declarations of interest. Do you have any declarations of interest? Councillor Dennis. Councillor Dennis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, I shall be blanking the screen off when it comes up to the financials, Michael.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dennis. Okay, agenda item number four. Public participation, residents of Skegness are invited to send questions by email about any item published on the agenda. Later than noon on Tuesday 30th of June, these will be published within the minutes together with the council's response. Any comments relevant to the council decision will be read out during this item but limited to no more than one resident and the total number. What can be achieved is 15 minutes chosen with the accord of the order received.
There have been none received, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, town clerk. Moving on to agenda item number five, the mayor's announcements and correspondence. As you well know, we're still in semi-lockdown and as time is moving on. But everything, all the details can be found on the council website, Facebook or Twitter site. Moving on to agenda item number six, the schedule of payments for approval, they are attached.
Yeah, I'll move them.
Councillor Anderson's moved those, do I have a second there?
I'll second them, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Burnham, second them, all in favour, please raise your hands on the screen. Councillor Saxton, are you voting? Councillor Saxton, are you voting?
Now I can, yes, yes.
You're voting, okay, you learn how to raise your, it's okay, would you like to put your microphone on mute, I've got you, that's carried then, thank you. Need to mute the microphone, councillor Saxton, please.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number seven, councillor questions to the mayor, none received. Agenda item number eight, questions to, comments from Lincolnshire Police representative, town clerk, please.
The.
Sorry, councillor Cunningham, sorry, I've just missed his hand. Councillor Cunningham? No, I think he must have done it by mistake, sorry, okay, sorry, town clerk.
The inspector Jackie Barnsley has sent her apologies for this evening, but she has sent me a written response to each of the questions which are on the agenda. I can go through those responses if you would like me to.
Yes, please.
So question number one was submitted by councillor Anderson. Just for the public benefit, I'll just give a brief precis of that question. So I've been told by Lincolnshire Police, in consultation with the L D T, decided to open the car parks for the bank holiday weekend in May for day trippers to Skegness, is that true or not? So why were the community leaders in Skegness not of this? Why was the health of Skegness residents put at risk by letting in hordes of day trippers into the town? And furthermore, residents' daily exercise was put at risk by the amount of people not social distancing around kiosks for sure. The majority of Skegness residents are angry that their health was at risk with coronavirus. With these actions after their liberties have been curtailed for the past nine weeks, the lockdown. And in response to that.
There's no sound again, guys.
Councillor Saxton, sorry. Need to mute the microphone, councillor Saxton. Please.
In response to that question, inspector Barnsley has responded. On Wednesday the 13th of May 2020, the government directed that members of the public travel as far as they wish for their daily exercise to have a picnic or sunbathe.
Can't hear a word, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we shouldn't be hearing you councillor Saxton, but we can hear you, okay, so. Can we mute councillor Saxton, please? Sorry.
Picking my cup, they could do that for the daily exercise to have a picnic or sunbathe. This was not a decision taken by the police and we were all for, just because you can doesn't mean you should. The police had no power relating to the amount of people who came to the coast. We had to rely to a certain extent on people's personal responsibility. The closure of car parks was not deterring people from travelling to Skegness and our observations were reported back to the L D C who took the decision to open car parks. This would be for E L B T to update community leaders as they felt appropriate. We worked with the L D C regarding the social distancing measures and assisting in advising with riding local.
Can you hear me? I can't hear a thing.
Councillor Saxton, I think it is probably your computer that's not playing, I think everybody else is hearing me. We can hear you, though. So that was the end of the response for question one. We want to do this one question at a time.
Yes, we can do them one at a time if you want, yes, whichever way you would like to do it, as long as the.
If we do them one at a time, because I don't know whether the councillor's putting the questions and want to come back on the response or whether any other.
Anybody there, I can't hear anything at all.
Councillor Dennis, please.
If I could just assist councillor Saxton, if he probably turns his, or somebody can call him up, if you tell him if he turns his picture off, it can often work just on audio only, it's probably his pictures, it's sucking all his power out of the internet connection. So if he just turns his picture off, he might be able to hear what's going on. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson, please. Councillor Anderson?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I was having the tool problem again with my controls at the top of the zoom. Yeah, do you want me to respond to the first one or do you want to take them both, my questions?
You can respond to the first one, but we'll go through them one by one, just so it's quite clear to the public if anybody's out there watching.
Okay, thank you. Now we know the answer to the questions and yes, I think a question needs to be posed to East Lindsay District Council now the inspector has answered. I think when it comes down to public safety, I think that's an issue that's, well, Lincolnshire County Council and East Lindsay and your role as an East Lindsay District Council is part of. So there are some concerns, to put it bluntly, I am concerned, okay? I'm not worried about businesses, but I'm worried about the safety of the residents in this town and people visiting the town that might have the virus, that's where my main concern is and the spreading of the virus. We've seen what's happened in Bournemouth, Mr Mayor, on a sunny day, and we've seen what the council had to do in Bournemouth. I don't want that to happen in Skegness. We've seen a lockdown now in Leicester and I was looking at the list of 36 towns and cities that are on the verge of being locked down by government and one of them is Derbyshire as well. So I am concerned that a lot of people from those catchment areas of Leicestershire and Derbyshire do visit Skegness. That's hence my question, my question is based on the safety of the residents in Skegness, thank you.
Thank you, I think it's quite clear, or the answer that was given myself, is that the government wasn't very clear. At the end of the day, they allowed them to travel anywhere in the country and they weren't putting a block on anything. So I think, you know, they acted, everybody's acted on what the government said, so that wasn't clear. But I don't feel that that was us as a town council or as a district or as a county, we didn't fail the people. Our government did at top level, but I appreciate where you're coming from. Councillor Dennis, you've got your hand up, please.
Sorry, can somebody please help councillor Saxton out, please, because he's out there, he can't hear nothing what's going on. Can please somebody have the good manners at least, please if we may, just to sort it, see if you can help in places.
I am trying to get through to him, Mr Mayor, but it's struggling at the minute.
He won't answer his phone, I've messaged him myself. Councillor, I've got Steve, councillor Steve, who's Steve?
It's I, Mr.
Sorry?
It's I.
Sorry, councillor Kirk, got you, it's all right, it's just seen Steve on the screen, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I take on board councillor Anderson's comment, but let's be realistic about this. Both the police and the district council were between a rock and a hard place. The first weekend when we have lovely sunny weather, we kept the car parks shut and we kept the toilets shut. As a police officer correctly said, people still came to the coast. They parked dangerously all over the town, not just in Skegness but all the towns up the coast. They were urinating and defecating in public because the toilets were closed, that is far more of a health hazard. The police did request that the car parks were open for the following bank holiday in consultation with us. That request was made on a Thursday and all district councillors were emailed to say the car parks and toilets would be open. So the community leaders had been dealt with. If you mean that East Lindsay should have emailed the town clerk and all parish councillors, yeah, I think they probably should have done. In all honesty, councillor Anderson, I think they've made an error there in not communicating clearly exactly what was happening and why it was happening.
Thank you, councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, and thank you for a response from councillor Kirk. In his view that urinating and causing rubbish and disservice is more of a health hazard than coronavirus, well, I'll take issue with that.
Not heard anything of that last lot at all, I can't, there's no sound coming from you, this is the host.
Can I continue?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry about this, obviously, yeah, I am concerned and if the message is quite clear that community leaders aren't just district councillors, it's the community of Skegness that is involved, then obviously the town clerk and the rest of the community leaders, not just councils but community leaders as such, should have been informed of what was going on and not just have hordes of people coming into the town. I think this question needs to be posed to R M P about the confused communication that the government gave and continued to give regarding coronavirus. My concern is, as I said, not wanting to see the spread of this virus into the residents of Skegness, which could mean deaths in Skegness from this virus of my family, my grandchildren and residents of this town. I do not want to see that happen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to question number two then, town clerk, please.
The question number two was also posed by councillor Anderson. And the question is, what is the latest figures for hate crimes in 2019-20 in Skegness and a breakdown on B A M Es? How many arrests have been made and what support is given to the victims of these disgusting crimes? These victims scared for the rest of their lives. The response that I've had is at the time of writing, I've not received the information from my performance and data officer. So that is the response at the moment in time.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson, would you like to come back at that one?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, I did have some freedom of information regarding the figures and the figures relate to 20 hate crimes relating to B A Ms in Skegness surrounding areas. I just wanted to confirm that with the police inspector and see what they are doing. Can I have this question still clarified at the next council meeting? I intend to pursue this, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we'll make sure that answer is received by the office. And okay, moving on to the next question by councillor Finley.
Mayor, this, yes, the question by councillor Finley. Why was it such a slow response to remove three travellers from Wainfleet playing fields before it increased to approximately 60? What is the way forward to improve the police response for the sake of residents, businesses and the town? The response from inspector Barnsley is, the removal of travellers is a complex issue, as I'm sure the residents will appreciate. This is council land, but it is sublet. Legal proceedings were due to begin by the company, but the travellers left prior to that being progressed. Of note, the National Vehicle Intelligence Service, together with the police, ended, conducted a number of checks on the vehicles present. This resulted in the seizure of a caravan. We have to assess each situation accordingly and determine where they are and who the land belongs to.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Finley, would you like to come back on that, anything, you've got the answer that you required at this moment?
Yeah, I think the main concern for me was, I'd got numerous, obviously being a local person, you get a lot of concerns and people direct it at myself. So I've got a lot of people asking me what I was going to do about it and my response then was quite, it was really, there's not a lot I can do about it. It's not like I can go down there and ask them to move. The only thing I could really do is put a question to obviously the police itself and ask them, you know, what they could do about it. I mean, when I actually contacted the police, they'd had 30 odd phone calls that morning regarding it. And there was also people ringing me up saying that they have CCTV footage of the actual damage of them ripping the bollard out. So my concern was that if they can do something like that and the police have to go down a certain, you know, do a certain process to remove them, then how far can, you know, can the travellers go before, you know, the police can intervene? And I just thought it was, you know, it needed, you know, it needed the question asked, asking, so.
Okay, thank you. It baffles me when they break into places, they actually broken bollards and they're broken in, so I can't, I don't get the answer myself. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, can I agree with councillor Finley and yourself on regarding vandalism? But the issue is on Wainfleet Road, it doesn't belong to the local authorities anymore, I understand, it belongs to a trust now, as you're probably aware. So I think it was down to whoever the landowners now is, which is, sorry.
Sorry, I think it's Magnavita, I think it's from by Sport England, but it's from Magnavita, I do believe.
Which is an alma of East Lindsay District Council, you're absolutely correct, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Tony Ty, please.
Yes, I was just going to say. You know, councillor Anderson has just said, the problem you've got, if it's not on private land, if it's not on council land, it's very difficult to move them. And the travellers are very acute at coming in on a Thursday. They know that you've got 24 hours before you can get the movement of paperwork. So it's going to be, they're going to be there till Monday at least, then they move anyway.
I fully agree, but at the end of the day, like I'll just clarify once again, it's still breaking and entering. So we wouldn't get away with it. So again, the answer is not really answered my question, answered the question for me personally. Councillor Anderson, you've got your hand up again or? Thank you. Okay, I think that's answered the questions and thank you to the town clerk. Moving on to agenda item number nine, reports from council representatives to the outside bodies attached. Division report provided by councillor Cunningham.
Not sure, is councillor Cunningham next, his video has gone blank. He's back.
Is he back? Councillor Cunningham.
Yeah, I keep having a few problems, I just keep turning it off.
Okay, thank you, we're on, we're on agenda item number nine, the report from yourself, Lincolnshire Sensory Services. Councillor Anderson? Councillor Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Does councillor Cunningham wish to speak or can I just join in now, Mr Mayor? Because I want to know what we're going to do with this good report.
Okay, would you like to speak on this, councillor Cunningham?
I don't know whether the clerk wants to run through his opinion of the report and see where he feels we stand. I did have a conversation with the clerk regarding the report. And I felt there were some issues with regards the conversation. So whether the clerk wants to talk to everybody and just give his opinion on the report for us to take it from there and then I'll come in.
Thank you.
Can, I can do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
So looking at the report, the first section is in respect of the accessway from Lumley Road to the service road at the back. And it talks about painting the columns in a different colour to increase the contrast of that. But it recognises that the current colours that are available or that are used in that area reflect the general colours used in Tower Gardens. Now, this area is not actually part of the listed area. And therefore it isn't under the guidance of historic England as such. However, whilst it might seem fairly straightforward, I think council would want to reflect carefully on any colour schemes in this area, but moreover, I think that whole structure would need looking at in a bigger way and having this more as a long-term project when funding is available. We haven't got any funding for the repair and maintenance or, you know, major repairs to this at the moment. It's not structurally in a poor condition, but you couldn't just go along and paint it because some of the areas are rusty and would need to be appropriately before any colour change could be put in place. So I think this might be a longer term ambition, perhaps, I mean, there are other colours that could be used. But this is probably something for beyond the current financial year and therefore might want to go into the council's business plan. Similarly, with 1B, it talks about lighting in that area. Now, currently we have no power supply into that structure. And I feel that it would probably be quite an expensive exercise to get power there. Because it would have to go, it was coming from our existing supply to go underneath the road in some way, which is an adopted road. So, or potentially it might be possible, one of the owners is probably on either side to allow a supply to come to their buildings, but it still would need to be that put in place. Again, there's no budget in the current year to do that, so that could be something that's, again, the longer term aspiration in the business plan. The point two, which he talks about the step access from. The point two, which he talks about the step access from Grand Parade down into the gardens. This, there is a small amount of money that was put in the budget for this year. So it may be possible to carry out the painting of steps. But I think council would want to reflect on the impact and the colour of that. And it is quite an iconic and visual part of the gardens. And council as a whole might want to look at how that would impact the, the visual impact from the gardens in, or choosing which colour to proceed with. Yellow, for example, which is one of the colours suggested, might be a little, you know, might not sit well with the rest of the gardens. The bridge area. Oh, sorry, before I go on to the bridge area, it talks about lights embedded in the ground and lighting the area. Again, that, that's likely to be quite an expensive project, would need quite a bit of work to assess what cost would be. And again, I think that is probably beyond the current financial year as part of the business plan. The slope of the bridge over the pond and the crack that's there at the moment. I think that's been caused by tree roots. We are, I've given the instruction for it to be temporarily repaired just to smooth out that crack with some tarmac. That would only be a temporary solution. But again, it's something that we need to assess what can be done in that area. And again, any permanent solution is probably beyond the current financial year because we haven't got a capital budget to deal with things like tree root problems. And also if we were to build steps or alter the, the slope and the bridge, it is likely to be quite expensive. So we might want to look at where we could get funding to support that. The, I mean, there are other areas in the, on the path which we're also going to address with some temporary solutions. Just make them safe for people. The, it also talks about there being lighting in this area as well. And as with the previous one, putting in new lighting means putting in new coping under the ground, new potential lamp columns, et cetera, et cetera. We've, we've just had the existing lights refurbished. And I think at night, there's quite a lot of lighting already in Tower Gardens. Certainly from our CCTV, we can see right across the gardens to, to the pond. So, and it's very well lit at night. The issue regarding the timing of the lighting has been, has been resolved well. Then the other areas are not relating to council property, so I don't wish to make any comment on those. So from section four onwards, they're to do with the town centre and the highway.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, thank you. Question I like to pose is to the town clerk is what is the must do's that we do under the current law for disabled access into the, a public place? If so, then obviously we need to move some money in to do, to make sure that we're complying with the disabled law regarding this. The other ones I wanted to do, this is a really good report, is the crossing points on the highways. I think we need to pass that forward to Lincolnshire County Council. They have a responsibility. I can't believe the tactile paving points point out to the roundabout the wrong way around. That's somebody who's relying on that, okay? That could actually give them a false sense of security and that needs to be rectified as a matter of urgency. And then obviously the bike rates and near the seafront and the shops, they need to be adhered to by the relevant authorities that deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dennis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A question to the town clerk, really. As you said, the entrance there of, of that road is very iconic. Would there be any, any mileage in trying to actually, if we can get some heritage funding to help with that? Is there any place we can go to find a little pot of money or something for that?
Okay, thank you. I've got a few hands up. We're just bringing these questions up. Hopefully the town clerk will remember them all. He's got his pen in his hand. Councillor Billy Brooks, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. One thing I was gonna say is obviously I quite agree with councillor Anderson when he mentions that these, we need to pass these findings on to the right people. But it's, obviously we have got a funding issue, as the town clerk mentioned, with, we can't do these various things instantly. But I think it, we can't just let this, a report like this go by the wayside. So I think it might be important to have some kind of almost strategic plan of the Tower Gardens and the projects that we need to be, you know, once money is available or we need to be able to have a list of things, basically a to-do list for what is next in Tower Gardens. I think that might be quite good.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brooks. I'm just gonna bring councillor Kirk in and I'll bring you in councillor Cunningham after because you are the one who wanted to speak. So councillor Kirk, please, Steve Kirk.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Yeah, very interesting report. Obviously, we appreciate that these are, the report was written by a specialist who deals, you know, a lot with visual impairment. But I actually don't think the report goes far enough. I actually think we need to be looking at Tower Gardens, not just from the position of somebody with a visual impairment, but all the other users who may use it. For example, you look at one particular thing, I think it's number three, isn't it? Where they suggest that the, the slope could be replaced by steps. Now, whilst that would be great for somebody with a visual impairment, somebody with a mobility issue, it would actually mean that wasn't accessible for them. So I think that whilst I accept this report and think it's a good report, I think we need to actually get more people involved and look at all the possible users of Tower Gardens and how the infrastructure impacts on them, not just one specific sector.
Thank you, councillor Kirk. I was actually on this walk around myself, just to clarify a few things. And I don't remember there being a massive problem with the slope over the pond. It was actually when you came over from, from the seafront over to Rutland roadside, there was a section that was raised. So more of a trip hazard. And like the town clerk says, by putting some tarmac in, it would, would sort that out for temporarily. I think that was the biggest issue that we saw. We'd crossed the bridge before anything was mentioned. And it was this trip hazard that was there straight in front of us. So if that's been dealt with, I do believe that we've probably cured quite a bit of that for now. Councillor Richard Cunningham, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, obviously myself and you, we both did the walk around with this specialist. There are other bits which we need to bring in within the town. With regards to the general mobility from councillor Kirk, the bridge itself probably isn't wide enough for things like wheelchairs nowadays anyway, due to the size. But starting with point one about the access to Tower Garden from Lumley Road, the colour schemes could be things like bands round the posts which are in the way, which are an obstacle. When we're talking vision impairments, there are a huge number of people in the town, including the elderly with visual impairments which aren't actually registered as visual impairments because it takes too long to get them done. So there's things like marking, marking lines around the posts. The steps, they are very important and I think health and safety outweighs any cost. So we do need to look at those. Referring to councillor Dennis, yes, that's a very good idea. Thank you very much for that. Looking at Heritage England, see if any funding is available. But we also have the town deal funding. This is an area that we could use if we were quick enough to put something together to try to improve things through that. Because at the end of the day, improving it for disabilities would include and encourage more people to come into the town if we could advertise that we're a disabled friendly town. So there is one option along with Heritage England and I don't think they would object if we got on it quick enough. The slope, like you say, it's a temporary repair. But yes, it does need putting on the back burner and doing professionally for the future. Because we know that potholes in the roads, they're repaired one year, they're out the next. So how long before it's out again? So we do need to look at that. And the rest of the town regarding the roundabout and the crossing points. I've already raised this with East Lindsay. Because these crossing points were actually relayed after the report was done. And there were brand new crossing points put in as well in the same direction. So that's two contractors because they're actually on East Lindsay's land. And I have registered it with technical services at East Lindsay and they are dealing with it. There's other areas in the town which, whether a group of councillors would like to get together and re-go through these other areas and push it forward to councillor Kirk, hopefully to take it to county for us. Because when you get to the one-way system, there's the islands in the middle which have no top towel crossings. So for people with visual impairments, you don't know where to go. It's a point blank no-no. We were told this on the walk around. But it's whether we can get a group of councillors to actually put in the time and effort to go through these real hazardous areas. I mean, you go onto an island and you don't know where you're walking. You've stepped out in front of a car, there's a crash. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Just to clarify, if anybody's listening, for the members of the public wondering what we're talking about actually with the tactile paving in the wrong direction. They, they tell you that they're lined up where the, where people follow them with their feet, they walk along them. And if you actually do cross the road from one side to the other, one, you end up on the roundabout heading towards Wolfies Bar. And if you cross on the other side, you end up walking towards Tony's chip shop or Buster's place. So that, that leads you right into the oncoming traffic or traffic actually travelling behind you. So that's just to clarify if you're unsure of what they, what they're on about with this tactile tiles. Councillor Anderson, have you got your hand up? Did you want to speak again or is it what come last time?
No, we should speak again through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Dennis, is it? I think councillor Cunningham actually asked the question I was, but since we have the chairman of the town fund here, is it something that we could, or he, they, his board would consider as a shovel project for the Tower Gardens, for the towns fund?
Councillor Dennis, would you like to comment on that?
I can certainly express that to the members of my committee to pass it on to the board if you wish.
It'd be much appreciated if you, thank councillor Dennis.
I will do that at the next meeting of the, of the committee. I will, I will pass that on to the board and I will come back to the council with their reply.
Thank you. Councillor Tony Tyne, please. Councillor Tony Tyne?
Yeah. Yeah, if you're gonna do that, councillor Dennis, you will need some figures first. Sit through. You need to get that, those items on that report priced up. That's it's gotta be done fairly quickly as well. Thanks for that, Mr Mayor.
Mayor, can I come back just on some of the questions that were asked?
Yeah.
I think councillor Anderson asked in terms of the law. I don't think, strictly speaking, I think we're compliant with the law because there's slopes coming down from Grand Parade which don't involve having to walk on a step surface. So it is possible to walk down a dental slope and around. So I don't think we're breaking the law by not having those markings on it. But obviously it is something that's desirable in terms of making it an inclusive gardens for everybody. As I said before, I think that we've probably got sufficient fundings in that budget set aside to carry out the painting work. And it's just for council, if they agree that, to decide what colour. I would suggest going with white rather than yellow because of the issue of loads being intrusive in the, in the gardens. And I think in the report it talked about white being okay. In terms of heritage funding, the, the structure that's there was funded through this type of funding back in 1999. I'm not sure therefore whether or not that particular part would be available again. And we shouldn't underestimate the amount of work that will be required in actually getting to scheme and a price for that. And I don't, I definitely think this isn't ready in the, in the sense that we've got all of those facts and figures together. In terms of councillor Billy Brooks' suggestion of putting in plan, that's exactly what I am suggesting, that it needs to go in the council's business plan as an identified future objective. So you'd have, as the past ones, you have your general vision of where you want to go with things. Then you have specific objectives that you want to achieve over the next, well, not only over the rest of the council that you're in, but it's usually the first year of the next council as well. So any new council coming in that has got projects to, to be working on. And that will go to, the business plan will start with the management committee in Lye. It is a bit delayed from where we'd hoped to be because of the coronavirus and the fact, the impact that that had on our work. So that was covering, covering those, those points. But I am doubtful that we could put together a scheme in time for councillor Dennis to take it back as a, as a shovel-ready project. I think if you were looking at a scheme to improve accessibility and ensuring that all of these in Skegness are dealt with, it doesn't, I think it needs to be the whole town, not just the town council's own gardens.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis, please.
Yes, in my view, I'm a member of Skegness committee and there's a Maplethorpe committee and there's one board. And in my view, I, they, they don't want, that we need to look at the big picture. When, when we, when we're in these meetings, we'll look at moving forward 20 or 30 years hence. And I do think that I can put a presentation together in principle. But I do also think we've got Tony Tyne there, who was actually on the board and is our representative of Skegness Town Council. And I think it would, it would be a stronger position for him on that board to, if we're both singing off the same hymn sheet, so to speak. And if Tony Tyne, if councillor Tyne presented that to the board, I presented it to the committee. And then it's like a two, a two-pronged way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dennis. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. The organisation that actually came over from Grantham to do this, they are more than willing to provide as much help and support as we need to do whatever work we need to do to obviously improve our town in regards to these aspects. And yeah, obviously just following on from what the town clerk said, it's a council decision at the end of the day as to what colours and things. We've got a thousand pound there to use, which we budgeted for last year. The posts that do stick up, like the one between the service road entering the park, it is a danger to a lot of people because it's just a black post in the ground, so it's not seeable for a lot of disabilities. And all the posts in the middle, they're light coloured, we could just put some bands round them which would suffice a little bit. So, but I'll leave it to the town council to actually say where they want to go with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll move the recommendation that we actually do the painting at suggestion of the town clerk. With regards to the town fund, I was reading yesterday a new communication from the government regarding towns funds announced by the Prime Minister. Basically, some more money is being allocated for pedestrianisations of high streets in, in part of the towns fund. Well, the Tower Garden has access to our high street, which is Lumley Road. So again, it fits, fits the puzzle. It just means that we got to put some figures and I'm just asking and I think it's really, would be a really good thing to do. If we are upgrading Lumley Road, which I'm sure the board is, is, is doing, that this could be part of that, that project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Dennis, you've still got your hand up. Well, I'm not sure if you didn't, if you left it open. If you wish to speak.
Apologies, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything, would you like to come back on that town clerk or?
Well, I think, um, I mean, what I heard from councillor Dennis, I think, was that he would put together some sort of strategic suggestion regarding the whole area and making Skegness and, and perhaps Mabelthorpe as well, you know, the whole of that area um, as an accessible um, town and area, you know, areas for people to visit and also for the residents. But strategically, that would then require probably um, the likes of East Lindsay and Lincolnshire County Council to take a whole look at that. And we could be one of the parties having input into those discussions to develop an overall project. It could then be put in place to maybe transform the area. Um, I think councillor Dennis was suggesting that councillor Ty, um, you know, goes with tho- those areas that we've um, or you've identified um, in this report and, and tonight. Just to say, look, there are, there are these concerns, those concerns are going to be replicated across the whole area. For there, there are going to be other areas where the um, the tactile paving is not correct. There's going to be other posts and other areas which are not suitable. There are going to be areas that are not wheelchair or mobility scooter. Um, suitable. Um, and as councillor Kirk mentioned, there are lots of other disabilities that need to be taken into consideration. And I think if it's, if it's a strategic aim of the um, the towns fund group. And then every party comes together to actually put forward their own local suggestions as to what, what projects could be put together and make an overall package.
Okay, thank you. Just before I bring councillor Dan Kirk in, could I just ask councillor Barry, councillor Cunningham and councillor Dennis to turn the microphones off, please? Councillor Barry as well, please. Uh, councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I'm happy to second the proposal for the painted stripes um, in white to appear on um, bollards of, of concern. And um, if, if councillor Anderson would accept to also include the fact that we need to think about disability access and um, within our um, plan, our council business plan, if that can be inserted at the next revision. Thank you. I'm sure councillor Anderson will agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis, please. Councillor Dennis.
Just to let you know, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. The towns fund board and the towns fund committees, the two separate committees are looking for the big picture, for the strategic picture. Now, for many, many years, we've always said that, and Skegness was really invented by Queen Victoria. Where it was a spa where people came to take to the waters. And so health and care and, and the flatness and, you know, the, the way Skegness and Mabelthorpe and so on see being so flat. You know, is, is, is another view, another, it's like, if you like, it's another industry as well as being tourism. You've got care, you've got care. And, and you know, we've got a lot of people chronically ill in this area and, and you know, they are, the towns fund board. We're looking at a massive, a vision moving forward. So the more ideas we have in the pot, the more things that we can talk about. You know, we're talking about um, uh, you know, making Lumley Road a pedestrian precinct, you know. We, we, you know, I've talked to councillor Anderson about, you know, we was going to put an arc over, you know, between the pier and, and bottoms. So we've got something like a all, all weather, all weather sort of place to go because that's where we get that down here. We need to be an all-round resort for all, for everybody, for everything. And that's what this board's doing. This, this board is looking, trying to be with a vision to move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk, did you want to come back in or have you just left your hand up by mistake?
My apologies, Mr Mayor.
No problem. Councillor De Kirk.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'm listening with interest to all this. I've just been mindful that um, the submission to the towns board will be quite imminent. It has to be. It's going to be in a matter of a few months. So therefore, whilst it may be an opportunity, I think we should all be, also be thinking about tasking the town clerk to actually get this work costed up and possibly be looking around or using the officers at East Lindsay to identify other alternative funding streams. Because it would be a shame if we pin it all on towns fund and this bit doesn't go into the final deal. Because everything needs to be fully costed before it will be considered. And that is a huge piece of work. You know, the clerk knows how difficult it was to cost up the pavilion over a period of years. And we're now suggesting that this could be costed up in a matter of months. Well, in fact, in a few weeks. Uh, the submission will be going October, November time. That's, that's the plan at the moment. I'm just mindful that let's not pin all our oats on the towns fund. Let's have some other opportunities as well because it could be that it could be three or four different funds that we go to, distant aspects within the park, rather than going all for, all for nothing, basically with the towns fund.
Okay, thank you. Did somebody have sent a message that councillor Saxon has got his hand up? Was councillor Saxon wish to speak?
Councillor.
I can, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you councillor Saxon.
Just, just regarding the entrance from uh, into the tower gardens with the columns and such like. I, I seem to remember at a meeting not too long ago that, that our portfolio holder Steve Kirk was in negotiation with the heritage fund. I wonder, has he been no mentioned since? Has anything happened with that, town clerk?
I'm, I'm not aware of any um, such discussion regarding heritage funding.
Maybe Steve Kirk could answer, if he's, if he's still on. Maybe if you can just tell us if we're any further or not.
Councillor Kirk, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, yes. Thank you councillor Saxon. To be perfectly honest, progress has been very, very slow since then for, for the reasons we know. Hello, yeah, I can hear you, councillor Saxon. Can you not hear me? There's no point answering your question if you can't hear me. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me, mother?
Hello, did you get that? Remind?
We've got the question and we're getting an answer back councillor Saxon.
Right, there is a new uh, post created at East Lindsay. Well, new, it's about four, five months in now. And the, the particular person is looking at the whole of Skegness.
Can you hear me? No.
Yeah, we can hear you councillor Saxon.
It would be rather frustrating, couldn't it?
I think his internet's got the problem. I think a new internet connection would be better. Um, can we just? Can you, okay councillor Kirk, if you'd like to continue.
Yeah, so, yeah.
As I was explaining, the person who's in post, we've already had one meeting in Skegness. Uh, where quite a few exciting ideas, some of the things they were looking at, um, were actually around looking at the original plan. Because the original plan was all about planting. And we've seen uh, within the report within Tower Gardens, some of the older planting is causing an issue. Uh, so that was about replacing all the street, all the trees that have been lost over years and replacing with something more suitable. So there's, there's work going on councillor Saxon, but obviously most of the offices at East Lindsay have been so heavily involved in dealing with COVID nineteen, with the grants and all this sort of thing. But most of this work unfortunately has had to go to, on a back boiler, but I'm more than happy to chase that again on behalf of the town council.
Okay, thank you councillor Kirk. Councillor Tony Ty, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, I, I'm listening to what's been said. I honestly feel that, um, the, the thing with the, the gardens is possibly we ought to look at a three-year plan of, of, of doing it over a three-year cycle and bringing it in each year, doing a little bit. Um, I know we're going to take it forward to the town fund. But I think we're a little bit late to get it priced up correctly to, to go that way. But we, we will try. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I hear what people have to say. Uh, and I'd like to see it and I agree with councillor Kirk. If we can get it done, okay, and priced up, I'm sure some uh, local builders will be happy enough to do that in, in the constraints and, and that will, will get them obviously some work as well. Um, hopefully if we get, get the, the funding and I'm sure they will come forward in, in actually pricing up in the times and scales that we need. The next comment I, I wish to make is, uh, I still understand that, that we, that Lincolnshire County Council still has some European money available. Um, and I'm wondering if that pot is still available, we can apply this kind of scheme to that.
Thank you. Mayor, can I come back on the costings?
Please do.
I mean, I think there's pretty much zero chance of it being done in the next few weeks. Um, with the other work that we've got on and despite what you might think, actually getting um, professionals in at the moment is nigh on impossible. We're really struggling um, even to get basic stuff done. We don't even know what it is we want to do. That structure is tied to the properties on either side of that wall. Um, there would have to be consultation there. I see this as being months and months and months and months of work before getting to a final scheme and cost that council could look at, approve and then put forward to funding. My suggestion is that we do the basic painting that I set out uh, earlier. And the rest of it goes into a business plan as a future ambition and we can then do it properly. Um, I think if I go out and get just any old price, we'll end up with either a contractor that can't do the job properly or we unearth problems halfway through any work and we haven't got a solution for it. So I think we need to do it properly and I think it needs to be, you set the strategic aim, this is what we want to do in Tower Gardens. We look at a number of projects that you might want to do, which may have other projects beyond this. And then we look at a funding package, try and fund all of those things. Um, and it may be, as councillor Ty said, over a three or four-year period.
Okay, thank you. I think we're lucky to have this report in front of us at this moment in time because it was delayed for, for quite a long time coming. So we could have still been in that position had it not been for councillor Cunningham chasing it. Oh, councillor Cunningham, please.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. Um, I'd just like to pick up on a couple of things and just clarify the proposal from councillor Anderson and seconded by councillor De Kirk mentioned about the painting of the bollards. I assume the proposal from the mayor from this clerk, sorry, was for the steps and the bollards and everything um, in that aspect. So if councillor Anderson can just clarify the proposal. And I would like to ask if our county councillor, Mr Steve Kirk, could actually look at the report and take it back to county as a, there's already been said, there's a pot of fund there, the European fund, which councillor Anderson has spoke about and their funding to see what they can do to try and help us make the town more accessible for all disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Councillor Ty, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with the, the town clerk. We, we really, I think we really should go down the route of, we've got a thousand pounds, which would certainly do the paint job. Um, should get the bollards done and probably quite a bit more. So I think that's the way forward. The town fund with that one, it, it's going to take too long to get prices uh, and get it into them for, for this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we just want to, councillor Anderson to clarify. Um, so councillor Cunningham, please.
Yeah, I, um, in view of what the town clerk said, we have a thousand pound in the budget. Um, my proposal was to use that thousand pounds for what the report recommend, recommends we'd needs doing. And the, the town clerk suggested whites uh, to uh, enhance the areas and make it uh, um, safe for um, for people who've got that disability.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Dan Kirk, would you like to come back and second that?
Yeah, absolutely. That was my, um, yeah, councillor Anderson did uh, suggest that uh, follow the report with the available budget. Uh, so yeah, go with the white.
Okay, so we know what we're voting for. Councillor Cunningham, are you, are you clear with that one?
Yes, thank, yes, thank you. Could we just ask councillor Kirk if he would take the county forers and see what they can do to help?
Okay, maybe councillor Kirk would like to answer that for you?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to forward the full report to the new highways officer for the east.
Thank you councillor Kirk, thank you. Okay, so we know what we're voting for then. So we've got a proposer and a seconder that we continue with the works with our thousand pound budget and get those in, in. All vote, please. And we've just got councillor Saxon, if anybody can see him on his screen. I can hear him, but I can't see him. So that's carried anyway. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number ten, reports by district and county councillors, none received.
Mayor, um, there was a late, um, a, a report that came in after the um, um, agenda was dispatched from councillor Macy, um, which we would circulate um, out tomorrow. It can be taken uh, at the next meeting, but we'll, we'll circulate it out so that you've got the information um, that's within it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cunningham, you've got your hand up again or have you left it for last time? Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number eleven, motions, none received. Agenda item number twelve, new model code of conduct consultation attached. The LGA consults, consultation has a deadline of the seventeenth of August two thousand and twenty and must be completed online in one go. Now, could I just ask councillor Ty and councillor Saxon to mute their microphones, please? Councillor Ty, can you mute your microphone and councillor Saxon, please? Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I'll just move it, be noted. Thank you.
Okay, we have a seconder.
Mayor, does that mean that council doesn't wish to respond? I think, um, the choice is if council wishes to respond to the consultation and the questions are there. Then um, council will need to provide answers to that um, by the date. And then either myself or the deputy town clerk would uh, put that on, the, the response on there. Or if you don't wish to respond, uh, respond, then just noting it is fine.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Edgington.
I suppose individual councillors, could if they so chose, they could um, respond individually, could they not?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Anderson, please.
Councillor Edgington uh, said what I was going to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we've got it proposed, uh, that it's been noted. Do I have a second for that, please? Councillor Barry. Councillor Barry.
I was just going to second it, that's all, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we've got it proposed and seconded that we noted. All in favour, please show your hands. Once again, one, only one vote missing, which is councillor Saxon, he's got his hand up then, but I can't see him on my screens.
He's carried by the majority.
Okay, agenda item number. Okay, agenda item number 13, Remembrance Parade 2020, the report is attached to set up and appoint a working group, task and finish group, to plan the 2020 Remembrance Parade and to identify and resolve any improvements that can be made from previous years. Councillor Dennis, please. Councillor Dennis.
I beg your pardon, Mr Mayor, have let me handle.
Oh, sorry.
Mayor, can I just, before going into the details, just to say that if the current government restrictions that are currently applicable remain to Remembrance Day, there would not be, you would not be able to have a Remembrance Parade because they can't be mass gatherings. So any sort of parade is totally reliant on the restrictions being reduced or removed. If council go ahead with British Legion to plan something, and I think there needs to be, if they're planning for a full parade, then there needs to be a backup plan that relates to something that's socially distanced because we don't know what situation we're going to be in November. And I would hate for a whole load of work to be done and then for something not to be able to go ahead because it hasn't been planned for. So I think there needs to be a plan as if the parade can go ahead as normal and a plan for a socially distanced parade, which would probably mean a very much more limited number of people. And then also a plan to handle the communications if such a parade can't go ahead because of the restrictions.
Yeah, definitely. We need to be geared up for that so we don't make any mistakes on the day. Councillor Steve Kirk, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Last December, myself and councillor Danny Brooks put a motion towards this council because of the last parade. And with the greatest respect to all those involved, it was shambolic, to say the least. A lot of new people were in post, a lot of new people weren't 100% sure what they were doing and anybody who was there on the day will know that many, many things didn't happen the way they should be. And to a lot of people, it's really, really important that the parade happens exactly how the parade should happen. There were some embarrassing periods when people didn't know what they were doing, when the town crier had to step in to read out the laying of the wreaths because nobody was there to do that role and he couldn't actually see because he didn't have his glasses. So they were red out. So a catalogue of errors, but nobody was at fault. The only reason this was in such a bad place was, as I said, because there was a lot of new people in post and there was a definite lack of planning. Now thankfully, everybody's in a much better position. The RBL Royal British Legion is in a much stronger position than it was then. The churches are thoroughly on board as well. So I think it's important that we do plan for a full parade. So everybody knows who is responsible for what. Because taking on board what the clerk said, that we may not be able to have that full parade, it will be a blueprint for all parades going forward. So there will be a handbook of how Skegness delivers its Remembrance Parade that can just be used year after year after year. Taking on board the fact that this year may be slightly different. Well, there'll be workarounds. I'm sure there'll be guidance coming forward to how to adapt your parade. So I don't think we'll be left on our own on this. I'm sure there'll be, there'll be guidance on what will happen if we have to have a socially distant parade. But I do think it's important that we have this blueprint of what the parade should look like and who should do what. Simple things like who is responsible providing the lectern and the microphone. You know, these things are not laid down anywhere, which is why it didn't happen. So I think it is important. I think the recommendations at 2.1 are fine recommendations. I think it's important that we follow A, B and C and D. C in particular. I know that there's other councillors here having involved in Legion and they really are keen to work with us. So the parade can be as good as a parade can possibly be and show due respect for all the fallen, both men and women who have lost their lives from this town and that we can show our respect correctly. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, sorry, I was going to add to that. So I'd be happy to move 2.1 A, B, C and D as written.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm happy enough to second that. I agree with councillor Kirk regarding this. I think that we need, as the town clerk said, we need various backup plans. Hopefully, we will be able to have a parade in November and God willing, that happens. But I think we need, definitely need backup plans. I think councillor Edgington and some of the other senior councillors and myself remember when the town council used to take the lead on this. And we used to organise it in consultation with the other groups, but we actually took the lead on it. And some of the issues that councillor Kirk has raised were already there because the town council took ownership of it. But what happened is we didn't take ownership, we fell back and let others come forward. And obviously, for obvious reasons, the Royal British Legion, some of the people in the organisation have gone. And it's taken, it's gone backwards rather than forwards. But we need to keep this event going. We've got to remember it's part of our heritage. What people did for us living now and our children should participate in that and families should participate in that. I totally agree with the recommendations. I'm happy enough to second it.
Okay, thank you. I think we all need to be mindful that we need backup plans in place of what has affected our lives dramatically in the last 15 weeks. So I think we need to be mindful of everything we do in the future to have things in place. Councillor Barry, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with councillor Anderson and also councillor Steve Kirk. And I believe that there's been three councillors have actually joined the British Legion on the membership. So they were trying to put a bit of input into there and we hope that it will be successful in achieving what, which we didn't do last year.
Okay, thank you councillor Barry. Councillor Edgington, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I concur with the comments made by colleagues that this particular ceremony is so important, it means so much to the generations within Skegness. And as councillor Anderson correctly points out, years ago, it seemed to be better organised than in latter years. And I think that is regrettable. And I think councillor Steve Kirk's got the right idea. We need to get to grips with this so that we have a parade that is properly organised and shows what we think of the fallen because it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Finley, please.
Yeah, just hearing the comments, I totally agree, but I just want to put your minds at rest that since last year's parade, there's been quite a lot going on with the Legion and there's a brand new structure with a brand new committee actually been supported from the head office. So I believe the town clerks had, well, I've spoken to the chairman myself of the Legion, the new chairman. And I believe the town clerks had some correspondence with him as well regarding the present situation with the Legion. So hopefully, we can work with the Legion and produce a far better service. It would be handy if you could give us a little top up, Steve, if you've got any opinion that you want to share with us regarding the chairman.
Mayor, with your permission, I have spoken to the chairman, the new chairman of the British Legion and he has assured me that they do want to work more closely. I mean, clearly, over the last three years, it's been very difficult for us as officers to deliver on our part of the parade, which is the marching part. Because the, that was something the British Legion used to do, but withdrew from that nationally three years ago when the Plaid also withdrew from supporting it, supporting the marshalling of the parade. And it has been very difficult to engage with an ever diminishing membership, many of whom were simply not able to attend meetings and such like. So I think with the new committee and the new chairman, I have been given assurances. And I said that I would let the chairman know following tonight's meeting how it was going forward. But I'm sure you'll want to invite the relevant working group if you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a proposer and a seconder. We all know what we're voting for. If you'd like to show your hands. That's carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 14, the neighbourhood development plan, the report and the dependencies attached.
One of the orders, Mr Mayor, sorry, order 2.1D was to appoint up to five councillors to this working group.
Okay, so we need to appoint five councillors. Sorry councillor Kirk. Councillor Burnham.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I would gladly put myself forward for this monous event. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Burnham. Do we have any more councillors that wish to go on this group?
Happy to, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Steve Kirk. Councillor Anderson. Councillor Barry. Councillor Barry.
Mr Mayor, I've just got there. Yes, I'd put my name down forward gladly.
Okay.
Me as a member, Mark, I'm on a position to be part of this group as well, being a member of the Legion as well. Is that okay?
Is there a problem with that, town clerk? Would there be any conflict?
I think it's councillor Finley to decide who he's representing. I mean, I know the likelihood is looking at the overall picture, but clearly he would, if he's attending as a representative of the Legion, then you might want to appoint someone else.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'll remain as the Legion. I'm fine with that. If that's okay.
Mr Mayor, can I just let you know, I'm also a member of the Legion, but I would be attending as a town councillor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr Mayor, a member of the urban star, but I will be representing the town council.
Thank you councillor Anderson. So we've got four councillors. I think myself and the clerk are on this as well, aren't we, town clerk? Are we, is this the group that we're on?
I mean, it's normal for yourself as mayor to be on such, well, historically, there's been the mayor on the group discussing the parade. And either myself or the deputy town clerk will participate in the meetings. I would suggest that like this, they're held as soon meetings. That makes it easier for the other members to join at a suitable time.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis, please.
Yeah, if I could just say, I think, I tend to disagree with Steve the town clerk a little bit. I think councillor Finley, being on the Legion and being on the council, would be a good conduit between the two of them. There's no, you know, all we've got, I don't think there's any possession of interest or, you know, everybody wants this to happen. And I think the councillor Finley being in the Legion and being part of that would be advantageous, not disadvantageous, if you don't mind me saying, Mr Mayor. And I don't see any reason why he couldn't be on the vote.
No, I'm open to your comments councillor Dennis, because I think we need to get this right and we should do so. Councillor Ty, please.
Yes, I was just going to say that I completely concur with councillor Dennis. I think Adrian Finley would be an excellent choice to be on this committee.
Okay, councillor Finley, would you like to come back on that one?
Yeah, I'm just flattered by that and thank you very much. Like I say, since last year's parade, I put a lot of time and effort into help restructure the Legion and, you know, we're open, it's going to bring it forward. I mean, I'll just give you a rough idea. Last year, there was only six members at the first meeting and we had 22 at the final one before lockdown. So we are regrowing it and finding people that do need the support of the Legion. So that's our attempts as well.
So are you happy to go on this group like colleagues have suggested?
Absolutely, farming it, Mark, Mr Mayor, thank you.
So we've got all that, town clerk? Yes. All those members, thank you.
That just needs to be voted on.
Okay, we're just, okay, we'll go to the vote for that one then, please. All show hands. That's carried. Thank you. Thank you for councillor Kirk. And holding me back. Okay, agenda item number 14, the neighbourhood development plan. The report and the dependencies are attached.
Mayor, this was the piece of work that the council commissioned, having identified a number of sites. If we go through those sites one by one, there is some questions for council to ask or answer on those. The first site related to the town hall and the police station adjacent to it. The police have come back and said that they have already got plans for the police station and the court building. And so they're not willing to put forward that part of the site. East Lindsay are willing to put forward the site of the town hall. So therefore, it's the point for council to consider is whether it wishes to continue and just put forward the allocation of the town hall site into the neighbourhood plan as set out in that ability analysis. Do you want me to go through all of them and then discuss it at the end?
Yes.
Site number two, it relates to the fire station. Now, I know that part of the thinking behind this particular site originally came from the desire of having the public emergency services in one location as they've done in other parts of Lincolnshire. But it would appear, I'm not sure that the Plaid are to be on board with that suggestion. However, Lincolnshire County Council has said that they would certainly consider the site. It is in an area where there is residential development. The county councillors identified that it wishes to have additional sites that are available for housing and affordable housing. This would appear to be a site suitable for that. They have said that if the site is to be allocated, then could we consider extending that to include the eight firemen houses, which are part of the land owned by County Council. Site three relates to land north of Wainfleet Road. This is an area which is for employment use. So again, it was about having in place plans which make it easier for that to be adopted for employment purposes. The, there is a neighbouring piece of land, which if you look at the map, is that little section at the bottom left hand corner that's locked out. That's the western side of the site. That's owned by Elizabeth Ann, Countess Scarborough. And they have asked if their parcel of land could also be included in allocation. Then moving on to site four, there hasn't been a response from the landowner and therefore that can't be included. there hasn't been a response from the landowner and therefore that can't be included within the allocation. And then Lincolnshire County Council noting that we were doing work on the neighbourhood plan, have put forward a proposed site which is on Wolf Lane, Skegness Way Street Cycling Centre, with a view to that becoming land that could be available for, potentially for housing as one of the suitabilities. So again, council have got the opportunity of putting that forward. Lincolnshire County Council want to relocate, so that site would potentially become available in the meeting term. And whilst there would be work for any developer in assessing things like transportation and bug risk and drainage etc, that could be an available site. So council may wish to add that in order to, again, meet its overall objective, finding more land for housing.
Thank you, town clerk. Do you have any questions? Anybody that wants to speak on this item? Councillor Kirk, please, Steve Kirk.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, a very well written report. And it throws up some important considerations. I share the frustration of the town clerk. I thought all public bodies were working towards one public estate at the moment. And Lincolnshire Police often come to our council meetings and say, well, we have no money. Well, there's an opportunity for a capital receipt. Instead, they have other uses for it. Well, they know better than we do, but it does seem very, very strange when right across the rest of the county, the police, the fire and the ambulance are all located into one area because of economies that that brings them and the fact they can provide a better service for the same money. So that's a little bit disappointing. I do note that East Lindsay on the town hall side have asked us also to include business use. I think we should do that. If that site was redeveloped, it is a prime location for, you know, some form of business activity, being an attraction or be whatever. So I think we should take that on board and we should include business use within the gamut of options we've got there. Disappointing again that the landowner, the Cruft Marsh landowner, hasn't responded, but that's not really a surprise. Big parcel of land, probably a lot of value there. But I think it's an excellent report and I think we should take forward those areas that have been identified as report have been possibilities. I think within the plan, it's important that we allow future councils to grow and that we allow the town to grow and by freeing up this land in some quite strategic locations, particularly around the fire station there, that's exactly what we're doing. So I think the report is well written because there's a lot of interesting areas and I think as a council, we should look to include all those that are possible within the neighbourhood plan to give this council and future councils the best options going forwards.
Thank you councillor Kirk. Councillor Finley.
Yeah, I did look for it myself and totally agree with councillor Steve Kirk. My only concerns, Mr Mayor, is obviously on, it's for the residents' sake. Obviously, they'll be watching this. And I know that it's for them to view on the town council website. So I just wanted to say, make sure that obviously the residents don't think that this is all going to get sold and they're all going to lose the fire stations. And they're going to lose, you know, all those buildings in immediate future. These are purely just outlined areas of potential development, if I'm right in thinking.
Mayor, can I just come back? The neighbourhood development plan is an enabler. So the council has indicated that it wants more employment, more diverse employment. It wants more housing for people and more affordable housing for people. This is an enabling plan to identify, and this particular aspect of it identifies land where that can happen.
Okay, thank you, town clerk. Councillor Dennis, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Rezervé the police station and the old courthouse. There are plums afoot there, rather exciting plums afoot that I can't divulge to this council. Really, because I've been, it's a confidentiality thing, but there is something quite exciting going to happen. So I don't, I don't. I think more, I would say the councillors watch this space, because I think there might be a very interesting announcement coming in the future.
Thank you councillor Dennis. Councillor Billy Brooks, please.
Yeah, I quite agree with everything that's been said, but one concern was allowing the business use of the town hall. I feel like that may sort be sorting East Lindsay out of a, almost like a pearfield scenario. So that was my only, anything there.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Steve Kirk.
Councillor Kirk is muted at the moment.
All right, okay, it's gone. Okay, do we have any more comments on that? Councillor Brooks, Billy Brooks?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I forgot to say it now.
Thank you. We've got no more comments on this. Is this to be noted then, Steve?
No, it is for, it is for the council to make the decision and I think if I'm right in saying councillor Kirk proposed that the sites as amended as identified in the report be put forward into the, into the neighbourhood plan. And I'm not sure whether councillor Finley supported that or not in the proposal. Well, he said he supported it, but I don't know whether he was seconding the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to second the proposal.
Okay, so we've got a proposal that we include the business on the town hall site. And we have a seconder. Would you like to all go for the vote?
That's carried by a majority.
Yeah. Thank you.
There is also a second part of the report, which is for noting, it is the the arcing assessment that was asked for. And that will go through into the neighbourhood plan as well, towards the back of that. And it's the final part of the report. That will form part of the evidence space for the neighbourhood plan as well.
Do I have a proposal that we note that?
I'll propose that, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Billy Brooks, thank you. Councillor Edgington, please. Councillor Edgington.
Your microphone is muted, councillor.
I'll second that, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got a proposal and a seconder. All vote, please. Carried with a majority. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number fifteen. Western Power Substation Tower Gardens, the report attached.
If you recall, council agreed that the substation could go in the corner of Tower Gardens in exchange for the release of an existing lease for a substation further up in Tower Gardens, near to the Tower Gardens Pavilion Building. There has been a site assessment and the exact position that was suggested originally isn't suitable because of the location of mature trees and the impact that such a development would have. If you look at the second page, I apologize for the quality, but just by moving it a few, well, probably about less than ten metres to the north of the original proposed site. It's possible to site it without interfering with any mature trees. There is a gap in the, you can see by the second photograph where that gap is from inside Tower Gardens. The top photograph shows it from Rutland Road side. There would be a likelihood that three panels of the fence would need to be removed. But we could potentially then use that elsewhere in Tower Gardens where there isn't currently the iron fencing. Replace it there. As I say, the Western Power would carry out full landscaping around it to ensure that it wasn't inclusive. And I think this is certainly a better spot than the, as I say, the existing position that they have leased, which is very prominent indeed. The, the second part is a way leave, which again was discussed before. This is just really now had the paperwork through and to prove that this gets signed off. It's for a small section next to the boundary on the western side of the car park. It's against the fence effectively of the neighbouring property. It wouldn't, there'll be quite an amount of interruption whilst the cable is laid underneath. But once it is laid, then there wouldn't be need for further interruption and it does mean street lamp, which is on the service road at the back of the car park, can be lit. It's been on lit for you know.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Billy Brooks?
Yeah, it was just to say really, by the rules of things, was it supposed to be like the metal railings being took out before? Or is that just something that now is?
It's to provide access. They have to provide unencumbered access because it's an electricity. And yes, there would have been railings removed before. It's the very, it would have been the very first sections of railings next to the Tower Gardens Pavilion Building. It would have been in that section there. So yes, they would have been removed just further up. And as I say, what we can do is actually utilize those railings. I'm in discussion to try and get to a situation where the, any gates that are put on there are suitable and look, you know, fit in with the surrounding, you know, railings, that they don't look out of place. And they may not have the decals on them though.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's just a shame that they couldn't also think about vehicular charging access along the road. If they're putting in that substation, it just lends itself to those additional works as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, the clerk mentioned the landscaping. I'd just like to know who's responsible for maintaining that once it's all done, because obviously that's going to come to a cost.
Mary, it would come back to us to maintain the landscaping around it. What they're talking about is putting shrubs etc into that area. We already maintain a huge amount of shrubbery in that area. The extra cost of maintaining that short area. We're talking about an area four metres by four metres, so it's not a massive area to shield and therefore there's not a huge number of shrubs will be put in that we would need to maintain. Be cutting it back maybe once a year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dennis.
Can we move this, Mr Mayor? Can I move this, please?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Billy Brooks.
I'll second that, please, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All in favour, please show. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number sixteen, LCC waiting restriction consultation letter and plan attached to respond by the 25th of August 2020. Councillor Carpenter, please.
Yeah, move it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor Cunningham.
Move it.
Sorry, man, my hand was still up, but yes, I'll second that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a proposal and a seconder. All in favour, please show. It's carried, thank you. Agenda item number seventeen, request to borrow Jolly Fisherman paintings. Can councillor Cunningham turn his microphone on and councillor Ty as well, please? Turn your microphones off, thank you. Agenda item number seventeen, a request to borrow Jolly Fisherman paintings. The report is attached.
Man, this is a request from to borrow the Jolly Fisherman paintings from the Heath Robinson Museum in Pinner. As council will be aware, the Jolly Fisherman paintings are currently away for restoration. And the funding from that came from lottery grant money. And one of the conditions is that those pictures are then displayed in Skegness and that there is, you know, that they're prominent and available for people to see. And there is an event to mark that once, and obviously the COVID restrictions have been removed. The, I think it would be difficult to justify loaning them out so quickly after they come back. I'm hoping they will be back by this timeframe. There has been a delay because the restorers have been affected quite badly by COVID-19. And that's meant that we're now running several months behind where we thought we would be. And we have applied for and got an extension of six months from the heritage lottery people to ensure that the terms of the grant can still be met. So my recommendation on this is really to refuse the request at this time. And so that there is an opportunity for the people of Skegness to fully see, have access to see these that a moratorium on future loans is put in place until the end of this council in May 2023.
Thank you. Fully agree. Consider the amount of money being spent and the people of Skegness should be able to visit this fifty-two weeks of the year. Councillor Dennis, please. Sorry, councillor Cunningham, sorry. And councillor Dennis, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with that, but I do think we should write to Pinner and say thank you very much. And maybe then sort of like pencil it in for the future so that we can let them have it and I would have no objection to that. As long as all security and insurances were in place, I'd have no problem with it. I think it's very nice and we should be very honoured as a town that somebody wants our Jolly Fisherman to go somewhere. And it would be a shame to, you know, I think we just need to give them the reasons and the reasons. And it would be a shame to, you know, I think we just need to give them the reasons and the reasons are quite good, well and proper, but we should thank them very much and, and don't close the door on them, but just leave it ajar if we may.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dennis. Councillor Edgington?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it has been proposed that we support the recommendations. Is that correct? In which case I'll second those.
Yes, councillor Dennis did propose. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to echo what councillor Edgington was saying with regards to councillor Dennis's proposal.
Okay, thank you. So we have a proposal and a second there. All in favour, please show. Okay, that's carried. And that brings us to the end of tonight's meeting. And thank you all for watching and all attending. And we look forward and we'll give you the date of the next meeting. Did we have the date of the next meeting, Town Clerk? I haven't got that one in front of me.
It's the first Wednesday in August.
We're back on the first Wednesday in August. Okay, thank you. So that meeting will take place on the first Wednesday of August, which will give you the date of the fifth, Wednesday, the fifth of August, 2020.
I'd remind councillors that there, there is between now and then, there is a planning meeting which is next week and then there is a management committee meeting, which is the last Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. But the reports will be sent out to you via email and you'll be able to collect the agenda at the other time. So thank you for attending. Wish you all good luck. Stay safe. Thank you.